Okay, we're going to call to order the Town Center Plan Steering Committee meeting. Do you want to do a roll call?
Vice Chair Cophord.
Here.
Ms. Cook, welcome.
Here.
Mr. Clifford.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Ms. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Carey.
Here.
And Ms. Simpson is absent.
So, before we start, really quick, I want to welcome our new Planning Commission member, Beth Cook.
Yay.
This is her first official meeting as a member of the Planning Commission. So, welcome, Beth.
She comes with lots of experience.
And she does come with lots of experience. She has served on a Planning Commission someplace else. Where would that be?
It was in Lafayette.
Lafayette, great. So, we welcome her experience. So, we'll start with the consent agenda on the minutes from the May 28th, June 11th, and June 25th Steering Committee minutes. Is there any changes or anything to those? Okay.
Then I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda from the Town Center Plan Steering Committee.
Okay, there's been a motion. Second it?
I think so.
I second.
There we go.
Motion's made and seconded to accept the minutes for the 28th, 11th, and 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And that ends the Steering Committee meeting. And this was, this is the last one?
Is that why we have treats?
That's why we have, yeah.
Which I believe are Cheetos.
Okay.
I wondered.
So, the, okay, the final Steering Committee meeting is adjourned. That was easy. We can all go home.
All right, that's how it's done, Pat.
So, calling to order the Planning Commission meeting for August 13th, 2013. Are we required to officially do a roll call a second time? Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Chair Cophord.
Present.
Commissioner Cook.
Present.
Commissioner Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Griffin.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Carey.
Here.
And Commissioner Simpson is absent.
The agenda for this evening, we will approve the minutes from the 14th and the 23rd. We'll have the council liaison announcements, staff announcements, community comments, and then under new business, we will elect a new chair and vice chair, and then we will have a public hearing on PA 13-01 Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Starting with the consent agenda, the minutes from May 14th and 23rd, are there any changes?
I have something.
Okay.
Uh, May 14th, Kirsten, on page 13, like the second, third sentence, Commissioner Griffin replied, blah, blah, blah. I would like, I would like to back to the fact that, I think there's a transcribing error or something, there's a word left out or something. Otherwise, the rest of the paragraph seems fine.
And where was that, so Commissioner?
Page 13.
Right, I've got that. What was?
Just some Scrivener error.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Anything else?
Like a word left out or something.
Okay.
Kirsten, we were resent the 14th, right? Because there was a couple of things found, so the second version, was it just, that's the one I ended up reading, so.
The first one was more verbatim and needed to be polished a little bit, cleaned up some language that was said, and so you got a new, a new version.
Okay. I have a couple of Scrivener errors that I'll just pass on at the end of the meeting for, maybe not this night, but the 23rd.
Is that from the May 14th?
The, um, 23rd. Nope, it is the May 14th one, yes, it is.
Any other changes or revisions? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes with the change proposed by Commissioner Griffin?
I motion that we accept the minutes of May 14th and July 23rd with the Scrivener errors mentioned to Recording Secretary.
I second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Middleton, council liaison announcements?
Just looking forward to seeing the end of this. Oh, everybody knows, I'm sure, that we're the, came out the fifth best city in, actually in the United States, speaking with over 1,800 cities, and they take all sorts of things, and one of them is the planning for the city, the parks, in relation to the population and our future plans. So, planning had a big part of this whole getting us number five. We went from, what, 100 to five. Wasn't that it? Yeah, I think we went from 100 to five. And a lot of it's probably because I'm mayor, you know, just kidding. We're down to the last group, last group. So, but it, it took so many different things, and in the town that came out number one, the average price for a house, there's 1.5 million, so it's one of those communities that's pretty high up there, but we did real well, and so we're shooting for higher.
Great.
Brad, staff announcements.
He stole my thunder. I just, I have quite a few staff announcements tonight. First and foremost, it's not on, there it is. There's a couple of training opportunities that are coming up for Planning Commissioners if you're interested. First is September 13th, the city attorneys are going to host a seminar out at the, I believe Jenkins Estate, and if you're interested, it's on a Saturday, Chad, I think, Friday, so it's a September 13th. If you wanted to participate in that, you're more than welcome, just let me know, and I can RSVP for you. The other one is on September 26th, the Oregon City Planning Directors Association is putting a, it's Thursday, and it's 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. up in Jansen Beach, and it'll be a fairly comprehensive training session for Planning Commissioners, and I encourage you, if you have time, to, to take part in that one. And if you're interested in that, I also need to know, because that one comes with a fee, so I'll have to pay. The EPA put out a manual on the Built Natural Environment, and I ordered six copies. You're welcome to take them, look at them, keep them if you want, we have a copy for our library here, but it's just something that they put out, a report that they put out on Built Natural Environment, talks about good planning concepts and things that have worked on around the city, I mean, around the country, and things that may have gone bust in other communities that you might be interested in, just keeping up on that. We are tomorrow going to have our unofficial internal kickoff on our TSP update, so we have a signed IGA now, so tomorrow is the kickoff with the consultant group, and we'll start putting together a work program for the initial phase of the public outreach and starting to identify issues. On September 20th, the city council is going to hear Annexation 1301, which is an annexation of approximately 97 and a half acres out on the Brookman Road. August 20th, I'm sorry. It's the 97 and a half acres, there's 12 property owners involved, and all 12 of those property owners have expressed interest and signed petitions to come into the city. So, that's a little bit less, quite a bit less than the overall entire Brookman area. This is probably the middle part of the Brookman area, and it's primarily zoned for residential, medium-density residential high and medium-density residential low zoning classification. As many of you know, the Phase 7 is being constructed, so they're already constructing the storage facility, and they're constructing the foundation for Walmart. My understanding from the developers is that they're going to hand over the Walmart site in October. There's still some, a case at Luba that is expected to be, we should hear something back by the middle of September, but they're allowed to continue working while it's in process at Luba, and if it comes back not in their favor, then they'll have to remediate the site back to what it was. In the meantime, you might see those big missile silos hanging upside down out there. Just so you know, that what they're doing is they're putting in 3,000 piers that go actually all the way down into the ground to the, where they hit the solid rock to help support the base of the building. So, no floating foundation or anything like that. On September 3rd, the council is going to hear the VLDR amendment that you guys heard earlier this year, and that's going to, it's on their agenda now for September 3rd. The on-call planning contracts are in process, and so you might see some new faces here. If we get super busy, the on-call services are, we might hire a firm to come in and do some of the application reviews while we're taking care of some of the long-range administrative duties, and so you might have other planners here presenting on behalf of the city. And then finally, I just wanted to kind of get your feedback on the Planner's Web. I think I talked to a few of you last time, whether or not you were using it, whether or not you liked it, whether or not it was beneficial, if you thought that there are other training opportunities that you're interested in. I want to make sure that you guys are really well-trained and, you know, well-versed in what you're participating in up here. That's it?
Well, I just want to say, it's, I've had a chance to briefly look at it, and I'd like to continue using it.
It's yours for a year.
Yeah, it's great, no, it's definitely beneficial.
Okay. Thank you.
Question on the September 3rd amendment, that's, you said that's at city council, that's, that's not a public hearing, it's just a continuation of the last conversation?
It is, it is.
Oh, it is a public hearing?
A continuation of that public hearing.
Okay. Are they sending notices out again?
What's that?
Or was that just, or nothing?
Because of the delay, I do plan on sending out notices again approximately at least 10 days in advance of the hearing.
Okay.
To the same people, basically anyone who owns property that's zoned very low-density residential.
Okay.
Senate? Okay. This is a chance for citizens to comment on things not on the agenda.
Thank you. Eugene Stewart, Peel Box 534, Sherwood, Oregon. There we go. I'm still here wondering what the city's citizen involvement plan is. I've asked several people for a copy, never have received a copy, so it's kind of hard for me if I can't find it anyplace. Where is it hid and why is it hid? Hopefully, you people know where it's at. What is the program? I mean, the state definitely says it needs to cover six issues. First one, citizen involvement. B is communicate, or second one is communication. Citizen influence is three. Four is technical information being available to the people. There's a feedback mechanism that needs to be in the citizen's involvement plan, so that if people do testify that if they're wrong, feedback comes back to them, so they know why. And the sixth one is financial support. I think if you look at the budget, there's no financial support for any citizen's involvement. So, it's kind of hard to say anything, but if you don't have one, why don't we have one? Let's get one. I know in your code, your definition for the comprehensive plan is Sherwood Comprehensive Plan, that's in Section 16 of the code. Then if you go to Part 2 of the Land Use Plan and look up that definition, it gives you a much broader, and it says, "A comprehensive plan of Sherwood is made up of three parts." Part 1 is your citizen involvement and statistical information. Part 2 is the one that you have, and then Part 3 is what is in Section 16. Part 1 has been abolished, so how do you say you have a citizen's involvement plan? Everybody tells me you have one, but nobody's been able to produce it and show me what it is. Seems like this issue needs to be resolved, so we go forward. Thank you.
Lori Randall. I hope that was correct.
Lori Randall, 22710 Southwest Arkham Place. I'm sorry I missed the discussion on the Town Center Plan. I hope that the last meeting, which by the way, was a brilliant way to conduct a meeting with everybody at the tables, and I hope to see more of that in the future, but what I wanted to talk about was on the city's website, I came across the advertisement for the Insta-slums across from my house, and I was horrified. So, this is not so much, and I apologize to the Planning Commission, who very kindly tried to modify those Insta-slums before they went up and was unable to do it, but right now on the city's website is an endorsement of the, of the, those apartments. It's pretty much a sales brochure for those apartments. I think it's completely inappropriate. It needs to come down now. It's inappropriate, unless we're going to start advertising, you know, Sun Lakes and Cedar Creek and all the other apartment complexes in town, there's no reason for it to be there. So, thank you.
Are there any other community comments? Okay, moving on to new business, starting with the election of a new chair and vice For a new chair, are there any nominations from the Planning Commission?
I would like to make a nomination.
Okay.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Simpson, who is not here at the, at this time. I have spoken with her, and she would be interested in having that position. She has tremendous amount of experience, as we all know, and not only from her previous time on the commission, and I think she brings a really valuable resource for us, and I think with her, her style, I think she's going to be a nice transition from Commissioner Allen, and I would like to support Jean for that position.
Any other nominations? Okay, Jean has been nominated for chair. All those in favor of Jean, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vice Chair, any nominations for vice chair?
Commissioner Cophord, I, I'm sorry, I'm just totally chiming in. You are the vice chair because you are still the, you know, your act has not been...
Great.
Taken up. I think you're still the vice chair.
Okay, I wasn't sure if you had did it over.
And I'm a, I'm Brad.
I nominate. Okay.
So, no getting out of it.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Best try.
Yes.
Unless you don't want.
No, it's fine. It's fine. And I think Jean will make a great chair.
Great.
So, Jean, not being here, will be our new chair.
That's how we like to do it.
Absolutely.
Soon as she's gone.
That's how I want to be vice chair.
If you're absent, watch out.
That's right.
That's what happens when you don't show up.
That's how you became vice chair, as I recall.
Exactly.
That's right.
Okay. So, the next is, is the public hearing. Do we, does anybody need a break? It's only been 25 minutes. No.
No, I'm good.
I think I'm good.
Great. So, bear with me on this part, because I have not done this. So, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Planned Amendments, PA 13-01. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony concerning the above said item, Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The order of business the Planning Commission will follow in conducting this hearing will be, A, to hear the staff report, B, receive any correspondence, C, receive public testimony, D, receive additional staff comments, E, questions from the Planning Commission. The hearing will then be closed, and no further testimony will be received. Then there will be discussion by the Planning Commission following that, and any interested persons may present testimony. If you wish, if you wish to speak, please fill out one of the testimony forms and submit them to the Recording Secretary. The Planning Commission will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record, as the hearing will be recorded, so please speak clearly into the microphone, and limit testimony to four minutes. With that, I will call to order the public hearing, PA 13-01 Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Planned Amendments. Staff report?
That's me, sorry. Just to throw you guys off, it's your next used-to-looking over here for a staff report. I'm going to start just by actually reviewing what's in your packets, so that you have that familiarized. First of all, on page 21 of your packet is the summary from the public work session that we had, that Ms. Randall was referring to, where there was the small group work sessions, and hopefully you found that a good summary for those that weren't there, and for those that were there, it was an equally good summary, hopefully. On page 27 of your packet is a memo that was prepared by me and Michelle outlining the, you know, a little bit about the process and where we're going with this hearing this evening, but also bulleting the changes that were made at the direction of the Planning Commission from the original Stakeholder Advisory Committee recommendations. On page 29 is the beginning of the staff report, and I just wanted to highlight on page 31 of the staff report, or in the Planning Commission packet, it's actually page 3 of the staff report, under the Agency Public Notice, it says that the DLCD notice was provided on July 15th. It was actually July 8th. We had a, an email exchange on the 15th, and so that date was put in there, but it was actually sent on the 8th, which is important, because that does, that is the 35 days, the 15th is not. On page 51 of the packet is the slip sheet that references, it's Exhibit 1, and it's a slip sheet that references the Town Center Plan, so while it's only one page, what you're actually considering is the document that you received previously before the public work session, which is the plan and the appendices. And then on page 56 and 57, I, is the proposed comprehensive plan changes. It actually starts before 56 and 57, but on 56 and 57, I want to point out that all of those, all the text should be shown as underlined, reflecting that it's all new. For some reason, I didn't catch that, so that everything on those two pages are new text, there's nothing that was existing there.
56 and 57?
56 and 57. And I want to point out, and we'll talk about this a little bit more as we get into the, the presentation, but the map on page 56 of the packet, which is page 5 of Exhibit 2, is referencing the Six Corners Commercial District, and we put that in there as option 1, that's reflecting the existing Town Center boundaries as they currently were, and we'll, we've got another option for you to talk about, but I just wanted to point that out to you. And then I also wanted to finally point out, page 64 of your packet, which I believe is the last page, is a comment log that I've prepared. Jean Simpson had met with me previously and had some, some Scrivener's errors, but they were bordering on some policy direction, and so I wanted to make sure that I was capturing that and giving you the opportunity to hear what she said, and then give direction if you so choose, and then also, that will also be used for any additional changes to the plan that you guys have this evening. So, moving into the, the presentation, so in my presentation, I'm going to briefly review just the, oh, PowerPoint's out of order, the background, review the process for developing the plan, review the Town Center main elements, highlight the comp plan changes, talk about possible changes that might be discussed based on the feedback that, that you heard at the public work session, discuss the next steps, and then move into the public hearing. Just a reminder of why we're doing a Town Center Plan. Back in the 90s, the Metro Council adopted the 2040 growth concept, which helped guide how the region was going to grow over the next 50 years. We designated a plan boundary, but we never developed a plan, but we, having a plan helps communicate a vision and helps focus investment and priorities, and then there's also some regional incentives that are now being considered. If you have a plan and you meet certain criteria for the development of the plan and the plan itself, then you're eligible for regional investment, and our plan does meet those, this is outlined in the staff report. And then we're doing this now, because we received a Transportation Growth Management grant to do it now, because it was important and necessary, and we met the criteria, and so we did a grant. The grant itself included evaluation of the Town Center boundary, identifying opportunities and constraints, and then creating a strategy for the development and redevelopment of the area. And as you recall, we developed a study area, which was much larger than the existing Town Center boundaries and extended down into Old Town. We did this so that we would have, you know, a large enough area to really study and develop alternatives. We had multiple stakeholder meetings, we had several opportunities for input, and I wanted to point out, actually, page 33 and 31 of your packet is some pages from the staff report that goes into detail on all the different public outreach and involvement that was done in the development of this plan. Based on the feedback that we received, we heard overwhelmingly that Old Town really is the Town Center, needs to be part of whatever alternative is, is developed, and so three alternatives were developed for additional study and analysis. One was Old Town only. The result of that, the steering, the Stakeholder Advisory Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee to a lesser extent, and then the Steering Committee felt that that option was just too much growth for Old Town to, to support by itself. The whole study area was another option, and those three entities, the TAC, the SAC, and the Steering Committee, felt that that was really too much impact, primarily traffic impacts, crossing the highway was problematic, and so that was not the, the most desired boundary alternative. And then finally, the edges alternative, which was, you know, a little bit tighter, where Toallerton Sherwood Road, 99W, Langer Farms Parkway, Old Town to the south, and Cedar Creek Trail to the west was the boundaries. That was the plan that seemed to provide the best balance, and was the plan that really moved forward. It's not referred to as the edges anymore, but that's, that's where we're at. That became the preferred boundary, and we did additional analysis and work proceeded. We had additional practical and Stakeholder Advisory Committee meetings, we had open houses, and then more recently, we've had the survey and the public work session to get us to where we're at right now, which is the adoption hearing. So, this has been over the course of about a year and a half. We're a little bit behind schedule, we were hoping to be wrapped up in June, but because of the additional surveys and additional discussion, it got delayed, and I think that the product is probably better for that. The Town Center itself, you've got the plan in front of you, I'm not going into detail of the plan, because I think we've all discussed that a lot recently, but just highlighting that there's three sub-districts that have been identified within the Town Center that are really unique, but as a whole, support the vision of a successful, vibrant community with a mix of civic uses, parks, gathering spaces, offices, restaurants, coffee houses, specialty shops, and larger retail, transit service, and walkable historic retail area. The Langer Drive District, the intent is that it really stay fairly the same, but get more pedestrian-friendly as, as buildings redevelop, encourage, again, as redevelopment occurs, for the retailers to reorient or add buildings that will access the street. We want to, as we move into implementation, evaluate parking needs, encourage more mixture of uses, but also retain that of uses, but also retain that visibility on busy roads. The central neighborhood is really there to connect the two, you know, I think first and foremost, the Langer Drive Commercial District and the Old Town. The intent is to preserve those neighborhoods while maybe allowing more opportunities for slight infill that is compatible with those existing neighborhoods, increasing pedestrian improvements, and filling sidewalk gaps. And the Old Town area is pretty much the Old Town area as it is now, preserving the Main Street character, designing, continuing to design buildings and uses that draw people to Old Town, and make it easier to get to Old Town. And then some more infill and development, you know, there's vacant lots that could be developed, maybe some existing lots that could be redeveloped, but not a massive change over time. So, in order to implement the vision of the Town Center Plan, the first step is really adopting the plan and implementing a guideline, a guidance, through our Conference of Plans. So we proposed Conference of Plan Amendments to reflect that. The updates to Chapter 4 in the Conference of Plan reflect the Town Center, so there's just some minor changes that just reference the Town Center's existence. Chapter 9 is a new, a new chapter, and it's called, it's Special Area Plans. The intent is that there may be additional Special Area Plans in the future, as we focus on different areas. So it lays out general policies for all special areas that will help lay that foundation. We've also, based on the input that was, has been given at prior meetings, created a placeholder for the Six Corners Commercial District. We've identified it, we're proposing to map it, as we've shown, and we'll give you the other alternative here in a minute. And then acknowledging that we need to do a Special Area Plan for that, and it may overlap with the Langer Drive Commercial District as necessary. And then finally, the Town Center Plan is all new. It includes an overview of the plan background, the boundary, the land use and transportation components, and then, most importantly, the policies and strategies. So, I just wanted to sort of acknowledge upfront, and it might help guide your decision-making when you get to that point, some possible changes to the proposal. We already have made a lot of changes to the policies and strategies up to this point, based on the survey. So there may not be a ton of changes, but some things to additionally consider, based on input that I heard at the public work session, is making clear that implementation of the strategies may vary based on sub-district. Modifying Policy 3 to further reflect that there will likely be a transition of auto-oriented uses from the Langer Drive Commercial District, that may be more permissive, and going down to, you know, a more restrictive in the Old Town area. And then I mentioned that Attachment 2 had Scrivener's errors, and Jean had some recommendations on modifying one of the pictures to kind of remove that tall building on Sherwood Boulevard, because I don't think that really reflects where the plan is exactly at this moment. And then having some additional language at the end of the document to make it more clear that there's additional steps, and what those additional steps would be. The Six Corners map, so I'll go ahead and point, pass those out. So Option 1 is in your packet. I do have a larger copy if you needed it, but Option 2, I said we could put our attorney to work, we're paying him to be here, he can pass that plan. Option 2 is actually more in line with what I think the Planning Commission means, but we didn't want to assume that. And so that is, is showing both sides of Tuolleton Sherwood Road as well. Can I get a copy too, sorry? So it's reflecting more of the study area boundary, going to both sides of Tuolleton Sherwood Road, because we think that's what you might really want, but we wanted to put in there as Option 1 what the existing boundary was. And then finally, the Town Center Boundary is still something I've heard being a concern and a discussion, and I'll just, I'll say that that would potentially delay the project significantly. We know there continues to be concern, but we believe that that's been addressed in the new Comp Plan Language regarding the Six Corners area, which is page 56 of your packet. If we modified the boundary, it would require additional traffic analysis that would likely delay the adoption of the project, and we don't have the funds for that. The grant funds actually have been spent, so now at this point, it's staff time, and we don't have the money to do a significant analysis. We certainly can talk about it, it's ultimately the Planning Commission and Council's decision, and we'll do whatever, whatever they ultimately decide on, but I want you to understand that that comes with costs and delays.
Sorry, can I ask you about that?
Yes.
So you're saying if we want to make the changes that would incorporate more of Six Corners into our Town Center Boundary, that's what you're saying would be problematic at this point? Which I think is what the public and we all discuss, is wanting you to go over 99. And the solution you've come up with, or we've come up with, is Six Corners Commercial District is another special area, that's kind of a separate thing?
Yeah, what I heard most was that it was more the concern that the other side of 99 and the other side of Tuolleton Sherwood Road would somehow be different than the Town Center side. And it could be, but it doesn't have to be. And so making it clear that, yes, we have the Langer Drive Commercial District that's a part of the Town Center, and we'll have components to that, that doesn't mean that there isn't also this other Six Corners Commercial District that we do need to do a plan for that will, that you would want to have some consistency across that as well.
So by identifying it as part of this, we aren't necessarily going to implement anything here, but we've recognized that to be treating it similarly as we go forward in the-
Right. And I think certainly you can make it more clear in the strategies, or, you know, even in the legislative dialogue, that the intent is that as we move forward with implementation of the Langer Drives, of the strategies, as it relates to the Langer Drive Commercial District, that the intent is that it be compatible with both the Old Town portion of the Town Center, but also with the Six Corners area in general.
But we won't be discussing it or planning the Six Corners area in any time soon? There isn't a plan to do that necessarily?
Well, there's no plan to do that, that's correct. But that doesn't mean that you can't think about that as you're implementing policies and strategies.
And to be able to do that, by identifying this, that's going to help us have a reason to include it?
Right. And it identifies a boundary too, so that you have something, it's not just an unknown. It's an area that you're saying, this is where it is, this is what we're saying it is, we know we need to do a more thorough plan, but it is something.
Okay. All right.
So, I also wanted to highlight the next step. So we, with the adoption of the plan and the Conference of Plan Amendments, that simply lays the foundation for future actions that would need to be in order to fully, that would be needed in order to fully implement. And that includes evaluation of the Development Code, which would also include a public process for things, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but accessory dwelling units, modifications in Old Town, parking standards, setbacks. We'd also need to, we are going to be beginning the Transportation System Plan Update, and some of these strategies will be folded into that discussion. There would be some branding or signage program that, again, needs to be funded and identified, but it's, this identifies a roadmap to consider moving forward. And then possible zone changes and density changes, if the implementation process leads to that discussion. Again, any future action will require additional public outreach and engagement prior to So with that, my recommendation is that you hold a public hearing and consider forwarding a recommendation to the City Council to approve the Town Center Plan and the Conference of Plan Amendments. And then I do have, sort of, when you're done, some specific things I want input on, oh, I wasn't supposed to go there, to make sure that we talk through those. And I'll just say them, so that you keep those in your mind, but the plan in general, the comments in the comment log from Jean, the policies and strategies, the Conference of Plan Changes, and the Six Corners map. And I do have, as you've got a little preview to, the policies and strategies in detail. I'm not, I wasn't going to go up, you know, put them up, because I think we've talked about them a lot, but I have them available if you feel the need to look at them. That's all I've got.
Do we have any correspondence?
No.
Nope.
The only, in your packet is an email, a letter from the City of Tuolleton. That's the only comments we've gotten. We did get some verbal comments from ODOT today, because we were talking to them about something else, and I asked them, and they said they weren't providing comments, but they were supportive.
Okay.
So I had some questions about that, correspondence from City of Tuolleton. Would now be the time to talk about that, or at the end?
Yes.
Either.
Just go ahead, and you can do that now, let's do that.
Well, I just was, you know, the reference to, I was understanding what you were saying here, is they were pretty much supportive of what we were doing, they are concerned with the traffic on Tuolleton Sherwood, as I am and as we all are. Their comment that the additional 1,150 vehicle trips would be alleviated by the three signalized intersections bordering the Town Center, this is a continuing issue for the public and myself, that we've discussed is not going to necessarily happen at the same time, right? The three signalized intersections could be months after this, we don't really have a timeline on that still, is that the case? Months, years?
Not years. You're referring to Tuolleton Sherwood Road?
Right, what he's talking about.
Yeah, so first of all, and Michelle actually spoke with Cindy, my understanding is that this was written based on the Stakeholder Advisory Committee recommendation, where we had the MMA in place. And so there, I don't think that the comments would have been the same. Michelle, can you speak to the conversation?
That was the next thing, because I didn't think we decided to be an MMA designation.
Right.
So I basically sent her back an email, and didn't get a response at all from her. So I don't think I had any specific conversations with her about it. After the letter came, I responded via the email explaining that we had dropped that, please review the most recent documents, and if you have any additional comments, please let us know.
Okay, because her, yeah, that was the next thing, was her comments about the MMA designation. We have, in fact, dropped that still, and that hasn't, it was gone most time, but I didn't think we, didn't read that.
So the MMA has been dropped from the conversation, and then also, I think what was a little different than what she, she was on the Technical Advisory Committee, I don't think she understood that we weren't moving forward with the more implementation through the adoption of the Action Plan and zone changes and things like that. So I think the comments about even the traffic issues are really not relevant to where we're at in the process. The one comment that I think is a valid thing to consider is the reference to the high-capacity transit line, and that was another thing I was going to ask you about. So first of all, the Southwest Corridor Plan identifies that high-capacity transit is not coming to Sherwood through that plan. That doesn't mean that we can't still identify a, if it ever happens, this might be a good place for it. So initially, I wasn't proposing to modify the map, but her comment is that it should probably go, you know, show a connection to Tuolleton, and I think that would certainly be a fair connection, and maybe we can modify it to be a little bit more vague, I guess, you know, to show some different alternatives, or remove the high-capacity transit alignment because it's not coming to Sherwood.
Zoe, it would be nice if we had a conversation, because I was curious as to why, why does she feel when you put that designation in there, if they've clearly stated they're not, just in case they change their mind in 10 years, or?
Maybe, I think that it's more that through the Southwest Corridor process, the strong comment was, we need connection to Tuolleton, and so I think it's just more supporting that concept, be it local service or high-capacity transit service. I think it's more reinforcing that connection between Sherwood and Tuolleton.
And she talks about that in here, so I agree with that. I think that is a, I think it's very important for Sherwoodians, they like to get to Tuolleton. They do like to do that, so, yeah.
Is Sherwoodians the proper term for that? Because I have not heard that.
The mayor would know, maybe, Sherwoodians.
So is there some, is there some high-capacity transit notations in the plan that we need to remove, are you saying? Or did we, have we already done that?
I think there's very little. I think it was still in-
And is it even important to remove it, or just maybe make a mention that it's-
I don't think it's personally important to remove it, because it's not coming, so it doesn't matter what we say, it's not in the plan. It's not going to happen. But if that's something that the Planning Commission and Council would feel more comfortable, if it was out of the plan, we certainly can make sure we do that.
What was the public feeling about it here? I didn't think it was, they didn't want it either.
I think it was, we don't want it.
So I guess I would feel like it should be removed then, if nobody wants it, and it's not coming, why have the extra language?
It wasn't favored at the community comments.
So if it's just extra language, either that, or make some notation about the intent of why it's there or not, or if we decide to keep it?
Yeah, I'm looking at the Town Center Plan, and this is page 16, and it's the Transit section. And it says, this is the third sentence, I think, "Potential future connections such as bus rapid transit could serve the Town Center by traveling along Langer Farms Parkway to access Old Town."
And that's what that map shows, right there.
Right. "In addition to Old Town, another future high-capacity transit node could be located at the intersection of Tuolleton Sherwood Road and Langer Farms Parkway to serve the Langer Drive District, as well as the adjacent Langer Farms Development." So it says, it's more of a could, I mean, we could change that to say, let me think about what, I mean, I could come up with some ideas while we're taking public comment.
And maybe that's just my opinion, I don't know how the other, rest of the commission feels about that. It may not be a big deal at all.
Well, I think, I don't have an issue with the verbiage in here. I think with the issue that I recall was, it wasn't the high-capacity transit, it was the increased density that would allow us to get the high-capacity transit. That was what they were really, that was the big message, I thought, was let's not build density just so we can have a high-capacity bus line through here or something. So I think this is pretty vague.
By saying potential.
It's pretty safe, yeah.
And so Tuolleton is suggesting we add something to this map to specifically connect us to Tuolleton in a different way than high-capacity, is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, I think that they are, if we were to maybe even extend that blue line, the priority local transit route, to maybe show an arrow going towards Tuolleton.
Because it just goes up into Tigard at that point, so if it just turned there?
Maybe, I mean, maybe, maybe show what's, because it would still continue to go along 99, so if we just clarify that to kind of show a local connection along 99 as well as to Tuolleton.
Just return, you have two arrows there at that same, at that intersection? They're on, I guess that's Langer Parkway? That was the only, that and the MMA was the only thing I had comments on about that letter, that Exhibit 3. And then we are going to go into, at some point, Jean's comments, you said, and her recommendations for changing.
I would imagine that in deliberation, that would be something you would consider.
Okay, because I'm sure that they're very good. All right.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor to public testimony. If you would like to give testimony, please fill out a blue sheet and bring it up to the front. We'll start with Eugene Stewart.
Looks like they might be white as well.
Take one.
Just to throw them off.
I think that's something for us.
Eugene Stewart, P.O., Box 534, Sherwood, Oregon. My first question is, is that I don't, you've had some public involvement, my question is, does it follow what Sherwood's written Citizen Involvement Plan is? Seems like we need to find what that plan is before we proceed too much farther. It is also interesting that 40 years ago, when the Plan, Comprehensive Plan was developed, there was a concept much like this, but it was called the Town Square. plan was developed, there was a concept much like this, but it was called the Town Square, where all of our, basically, city hall, post office, everything would have been out at Six Corners, where all the government facilities basically have been centrally located. Because the feeling was at this, at that time, downtown Sherwood did not have the capacity to make it, it's not, it's not the town center of this town anymore. It may be the Old Town Center, but it's not the town center. The other thing that this plan seems to lack is really any good planning for traffic. We keep hearing about more high capacity transportation, but there's nothing about Goal Nine, economic development. Why are we not trying to create more jobs in our town so our people do not have to travel to downtown Portland, do not have to travel to Salem to work? You know, a bedroom community, the city cannot afford to be a bedroom community. We cannot afford the taxes. The city's budget is almost frozen right now until their renewal district gets done. So how can we afford this? Like I say, I think the traffic is really suspect even now, when you drive through here. I've even observed downtown, 90% of the traffic coming through Old Town isn't stopping. It's just going through. I don't think that's what Old Town was meant to be for. Good buildings is not what we need. We need good businesses, good business people running those businesses, and they will attract the people down here or even out at Six Corners. Also, if we are going to have a town center concept like that, why are we not looking possibly at four or five story buildings? We don't like density, but the concept you're trying to forward on kind of deems that that's what you have. And I think that's what, you know, Metro wants you to do. I'm not sure all the citizens here. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions about this and what goes forward. So I think it needs to be maybe at least tabled until you get your traffic study plan done. It sounds like you ran out of funds and you can't, you don't want to study it to death. I'll admit that. But how do you, is this really what some of the citizens want? I'm not sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Phil Grillo? Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Phil Grillo. For the record, I'm at 1300 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Portland, 97201. I'm a Landes Attorney with Davis Wright Tremaine in Portland, and I'm here on behalf of Tacfall Properties. Tacfall is the owner of the Sherwood Cinema Center. And with me here today is Elizabeth Farady, who's one of the principals in, in Tacfall. I have a letter that I submitted to you here recently. It's about two, three pages. So hopefully easy enough for you to read on the fly. What I want to do is not really read that letter to you, but try and just make a couple of points for your consideration here tonight. First, obviously, we'd like to commend the city for this effort. We know it's a long, hard haul. Good planning takes some money and some time and a lot of extra effort. And we know that you've been doing that here. Secondly, my clients have attended several of the town center planning meetings, and we realize the plan currently doesn't include the area north of Tuolleton Sherwood Road. And we want to make a couple of points to hear and bring some things to your attention with regard to that. As you probably know, while the town center planning process has been going on, there's also been a separate process going on to decide on the, sort of the final design of improvements to Tuolleton Sherwood Road. And that's been a process that's been going on with Washington County in the lead because it's a Washington County facility. At the, at the outset of that, when it looked like they were going to remove the signal that was going to be, that controls access into our center, we approached the city and Mayor Middleton, at the beginning of his term, was nice enough to try and encourage a collaborative process between us and Washington County, which we very much appreciate. That was sort of the good news. The bad news is, is that process hasn't really borne fruit yet. So we want to talk to you just a little bit, and it looks like I may be running out of a little time. So I'm asked maybe for an extra minute or so, just to be able to explain the situation a little bit here.
Yeah, you can, you can take a little more time.
Okay, I'll keep it very brief. I, I really want to respect your time.
We don't have a lot of people, so testifying, so that's fine.
Right. I appreciate that. But you don't want to have a lawyer go on and on, especially now when it's this nice outside. The, what I really want you to understand is, is that this signal is extremely vital, particularly to, to our center as well as to Albertson's across the way. And to give you a sense of how important it is, according to the traffic analysis that we did through Lancaster Engineering, about 75% of all the trips in, into our site, our left turn movements, those will be eliminated if this signal goes away.
So, real quick.
Yeah.
So the, so I just want to clarify what the proposal for that signal was or is currently. Is it to take away the left hand?
Well, there are four, are there still four plans?
In theory, but.
I mean, two of them involve tearing off the corner of a bank. So that one's probably not going to happen.
Yeah. In many ways, there were, you know, some.
Two remaining ones.
Throwaway kinds of options. The real option that they brought forward was to essentially eliminate the light, which would restrict all the left turning movements in and out, both for us and for Albertson's. Is part of that, and again, I don't want to belabor this and go too deep into the woods on it, but through, by working with Lancaster Engineering, we're able to come up with first an alternative that would have allowed the light to stay, essentially by doing away with one of the left turn pockets. That would have created more space to work with in the right of way. Washington County has recently sort of rejected that proposal. And as good planners, we have come up with another proposal that we are floating. And so far, we haven't rolled it out, a hard rollout yet, but we want to do that with you and with the county. We're waiting to, as Julie and I know, schedule another meeting with Washington County to be able to do that. So the reason I'm here tonight is to try, first of all, and put this more on your radar screen in the context of the town center plan for probably three reasons. First is that, as you know, the Six Corners area is the city's primary commercial district. And really, according to Metro, there are a lot of reasons why this area that we're in, included in the, in the Six Corners area should really be part of this planning area. Second, which I think is actually very interesting, is, is our area, which is, of course, this Sherwood Cinema Center, contains businesses that are an important part of what Metro calls a vibrant town center. So things like cinemas and, you know, restaurants and things like that that we have are exactly the kinds of things you want to have in a town center. I brought you a little present in addition to my boring letter, which is a binder from, this is a May 2001 State of the Centers publication by Metro, which you can get online. You may have already seen this on all the meetings that you've had, but I'm going to just forward this over to Mayor Julie here so that you'll have it. What's interesting about it is, is it talks about really what the town center is now. As you know, there hasn't been a plan for the town center, but it has sort of existed on paper anyway with Metro. And it tells you a little bit about the, the town center and it, how it stacks up relative to other town centers in the region. You know, there's 30 town centers of which you're one. Page 49 is sort of the scorecard currently. Now, that's going to change when you implement your new town center. Obviously, you'll stack up a little differently, but you're still not going to have a cinema in it and some of these other things that really the, the Sherwood Cinema Center does bring to your town center. My point is, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you absolutely have to have this area in the town center. My point is, is that what happens in our area is important to the success of the town center, whether it's in the town center or not, because we're part of the critical mass in that area. And it's also important to the city as a whole, not just to the town center. So what happens in our area is critically important to the city and to the success of the town center. And that's why we think that we should be partnering with the city in our efforts with regard to Washington County. We think the issues about access and alternative access, if this signal is removed, are very much land use issues, not just engineering or transportation issues. It's a package, as you know, land use and transportation in Oregon and certainly in town centers goes together. So we would like to perhaps at least have some language included into the town center plan that speaks to our need to have kind of a collaborative process that works out an alternative access agreement that is acceptable to us and to, to Washington County and hopefully maybe to ODOT as well. And we want the city to take even more of a leadership role than it has already. Again, we very much appreciate Mayor Middleton's efforts thus far. We think we're, we're here because we need a little bit more help from the city and we wanted to let you know what's going on and just be as open and honest about the process as we can. So I appreciate you giving me a little bit more time to run on about this, but I wanted to be sure that you were briefed. And obviously, we want to bring this forward to City Council as well. But I'm available for any questions or any comments that you have.
I have a question.
Yep.
Thank you. Because this is a, something that we, we knew was happening in the peripheral, but this is the most information we've had personally about this. Do you feel that not, that the Six Corners Plan will provide you what you are looking for if we just have that as a special planned area and not part of this? Because I think, isn't, excuse me, I guess I haven't looked. Is it not part?
Yeah, in option two.
As part of the.
It's not included in the, in the town center, but.
But it would be included in the six.
As a potential special overlay.
Special area.
In option two of the Six Corners Commercial District, would that?
What I'd say is that, like with most things involving real estate, time is of the essence. The bus is getting ready to leave. The bus is Washington County. They're driving the bus. And the town center plan appears to be leaving the station. We, we need to get on whatever bus is leaving the station right now, if you'll pardon my analogy. So I don't think we have time to wait for another year or two to have another planning process go on for another planning area. I mean, it satisfies sort of the planner in me, but it doesn't satisfy really my client's concerns. And I think really, it's something that the, the city needs to understand as well, because we, we just have to be timely about talking about the need to resolve this in a way that maintains the viability of the center. We can't have 75% of our trips running around the back of Les Schwab as our new commercial access. That's really what the, what the county is proposing. And that's, that's just not going to work in the world of commercial real estate.
Right.
So that's a long answer to your question. This is, I, I wish we could get on that process right away and have something in the next couple of months or even sooner that we could take. But this is an opportunity to, to I think, make some statement that makes it more clear. And obviously, the, the politics of this are perhaps above both of our pay grades here. And we, we look to the mayor and, and council to help us there. But we wanted to get this on the table to Planning Commission so that we're not surprising anybody and just wanted to start the dialogue now because things are a little stalled with the county.
Wasn't there a movement, wasn't there a movement to, wasn't it that Les Schwab light that was also under consideration as opposed to, opposed to the Regal Cinemas? Is that still?
It's one of the plans, but as he just indicated, it's not their preferred plan. Phil, what was your second plan that you haven't?
Our, our second plan, thank you for asking.
I've been tracking this intensely because I go to the theater all the time and I go straight across Albertson's parking lot, straight across that intersection, straight into your center. And we had the Regency Center gentleman here not that long ago, and he addressed, he kind of spoke the same. So what was your second plan? I'm dying to know.
The second plan would be, first of all, to work with the city and the county on this sort of what I'm going to call the backdoor access. We think, first of all, that kind of connectivity within the new areas that's developing there is important. So we want to work that out. More access is better, both for commercial uses and obviously for, for town building kinds of things. So that's the first thing. Secondly, is to maintain some of the left turn movements, both for us and for the, for Albertson's to the south, but take out the primary left turn movement that goes into our site. That way, Albertson's is not burdened as much as it otherwise would be. And we maintain some of the other left turn movements that don't really affect the capacity or the safety movement for the intersection. Which left turn, I didn't follow that. Which left, what do you think about? So a left, a left out would be from our center to go eastbound onto Tuolleton Sherwood Road. Take that one out? Leave that one in because that doesn't affect capacity going westbound, which is, which is sort of the part of the problem.
That's the counties, that's the counties' big thing.
You're talking left hand, left hand into yours from 99 and left hand into Albertson's coming towards 99, right, on Tuolleton Sherwood Road.
Yeah. The, I guess the easier way to think about it is, is, is what the county really wants to do is eliminate the left turn movement going eastbound that goes into our site.
From, from.
Our second option would agree with that with, with mitigation.
Right.
That I'm going to get to in a second. The big mitigation, the third point, is to work with ODOT to allow a right in off of 99 as far to the north on our site as we can. There's even been some discussion of potentially sharing that with the property to the north.
Gotcha.
So that you create as much of a acceleration, you know, as much gap as you can.
Deceleration.
Deceleration.
So halfway between.
Home Depot.
Between Home Depot and Tuolleton Sherwood Road, right there at the corner of the property?
Somewhere around there. Whatever the northern, northern part of our property is. I mean, we've got some room there to, to do that. Kind of where that third lane already ends.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, that's going to take, trying to get access onto there. That was something that was denied early on, as you may know, transportation planning rule and other associated rules have been amended. So theoretically, there's more flexibility in that, but I think it's going to take a combination of can do and political support by both the city and Washington County to ultimately get ODOT to, to really consider this effectively. But we think that we're trying to look at creative solutions using professional traffic engineers to help us get there. And we think that that's a good second option. We still haven't really given up on our first option. We just know that, you know, when you're not getting anywhere with that, you need to look at other options. And this was another option that our traffic engineer suggested. So we want to see whether we can get somewhere with that. Again, time is of the essence here. I know that the county wants to move forward. They have, you know, funding for the project. And we're not trying to hold up the project per se, but we've got obviously critical issues. And again, we think they are also issues that are related in the town center and to the city.
Yeah, they definitely have plans for that left turn lane. They've, they've got that, their eye on that property. But you know, think about it this way, if that entrance gets closed, you could put another pad site right there. You could build another business.
Yeah. You know.
I'm just kidding, really.
You got to get into it.
Well, yeah, I can't imagine.
It's a tough spot. It's a very tough spot. And I think we recognize that.
So if they closed that, where would the entrance be? Would it go behind the storage unit as well?
It wouldn't be closed. It would just be right in, right out.
We haven't gotten anything firm from the county. And I think that, you know, it is still a work in progress. But the idea I think that the county is talking about is coming in and then essentially punching a local street that would go next to the Les Schwab and then would connect up in the back to that loop road that will be created in part from.
But that would take away your direct access from a main street?
Exactly. I mean, there's, there's not, it's nothing but backdoor access. It is definitely not reasonable commercial access to a center.
I do like your second option. That does make sense logically, doesn't it?
Thank you. Well, that's what we're looking for, is that kind of support, kind of from the grassroots. And again, we understand why the county wants to keep this as an engineering decision, but we think it's not just an engineering decision. And I think it's, means that probably the city needs to, you know, assert why this is a land use decision that needs to be taken into consideration. So whatever you can do, I'm certainly, as I mentioned to Julie early on, I'm, I'm willing to work with, you know, with staff to try and craft some language. We, we're not trying to get you to reinvent the wheel here. And we understand that your resources are limited in terms of starting over with the town center plan. We're not asking for that. But we'd like to try and at least get some language in there that, that helps. And if you've got any suggestions, we certainly would look for that. So. That, that's a challenge in intersections. I drive that every day. And it's.
I drive that every day, and it's, I don't know what the good solution's going to be for that. I feel for you, because you're kind of in a tough spot between, you know, in those two major highways.
Well, every solution like that is a compromise solution. I think one of the things that I've heard really over time is that in many ways, you know, taking out that light doesn't really solve the problem. I mean, there's a bigger problem than that. So, when you sort of put everything on this signal and decide that that's the magic fix, I think that frankly is...
It just backs it up somewhere else.
That's right. It's just sort of moving the problem around. And so, I think the solutions have to be collaborative moving forward, and we're really trying to find things that work and that keep the safety improvements going on, help with the congestion, but at the same time, essentially don't wreck the center and perhaps even have, create a situation where we improve it all the way around. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, there are issues about connectivity between not only the town center down below, but, you know, our site and the Albertson's site. You know, those are, it's important to maintain that connectivity, not just for cars, but for pedestrians and others. I mean, when I've been through there, you know, you'll see at 5 o'clock or whatever it is, you'll see people going from, you know, from the south to the north where the parking lot is. And, you know, that, that's going to be problematic if you remove that signal, you know. So, making that into this sort of super block is not a good idea.
Right.
Anyway, I've already gone over my time.
So, I'm going to, I see she wants that you're...
Oh, great.
The tech fall person wants to talk to you, so let's...
Do you have a timeline on the...
Just give it to her, that's fine.
On Washington County's decision on this? You say you're still trying to meet with them? Are they giving you any sort of...
We have, as Julie knows, we've sent emails out and we're waiting for a response from Washington County to get the meeting set up. So, I'm hoping that it happens within the next few weeks, but so far, I'm not holding my breath.
But even then, that's not, a decision is just a meeting, right?
Yeah. So, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
All right. Elizabeth Farady, 214 Southwest Florida, Portland, Oregon. One of the, I go by Beth.
Okay.
One of the co-owners of the cinema property. I just want to piggyback on a couple of points that Phil brought up. The other thing that would completely go away if that light's removed is the pedestrian access, which is completely noncompliant with what a town center is supposed to be, especially if Plan Two of the town center is accepted. And it was a requirement of the city for us to develop that property to put that light in. And so, it was a land use requirement. So, it's kind of like, well, in my opinion, or it seems that that would be kind of your issue as well, because the cities who required that to be put in. So, the fact that the county's just like, yeah, kind of done with that, is just something to be considered, and that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Good luck. I'm going to a movie tonight, by the way. Just want to tell you that.
It's a late one?
It's Tuesday. It's Tuesday.
$10.
That's right.
All right.
Do we have any other testimony from citizens? Eugene?
I think I have a mail up.
Absolutely. Come on up.
I was at a meeting where the county came in on how they're developing Roy Rogers Road across, if you take the property directly across from the Seminoles, across 99W. Had a classmate that was at that meeting, and he's got a triangle piece of property that goes from that corner and goes down to Walton Sherwood Road. And what they are proposing is that his access to that triangle piece of property and then the other big chunk next to it will be go down to the intersection with Home Depot, turn left, drive past where Edward Jones is, and drive all the way back down to get to his property. That makes absolutely no sense.
Because they're not offering any more access on 99. That's the problem, right?
No, no access either on Walton Sherwood Road.
Oh, so the property...
Not Walton Sherwood Road, that Roy Rogers is going to take.
Right, okay.
So, what happens, I don't know what they're proposing for Safeway at this point, but it appears that, you know, we've got a real mess there, and we better be real careful how we approach, because you're taking a piece of property that now has access and making it an island. I thought we weren't supposed to do that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any additional staff comments?
Yeah, actually, the mayor just reminded me to remind you or to let you know, as well as the public, that next week at the City Council, Washington County is actually coming to do a presentation on the Walton Sherwood Road project to give a status update on where they're at. So, that would be informative for you as well as the public.
What's the date on that, Julia?
Next Tuesday, August 20th. And I guess just to reiterate that the Walton Sherwood Road, while it is an important part of the city, it's not, that project isn't something you're making a decision on. But if you wanted to modify language to make it more clear that we're not just talking about within, but also to the town center, you know, there could be some simple policy, some simple tweaks to policies. I'm going to pass this out. This is actually the policy, just so, for your reference, so you're not having to flip through all the pages. Policy four that says the city will ensure that new development and redevelopment within the town center contribute to a pedestrian-friendly environment with a human scale. You know, you certainly could say within and to the town center. And then same, I was, as Mr. Grillo was talking, thinking policy eight as well could be modified to say something like the city will balance the need for vehicular mobility within and to the town center, to make it clear that we're not just looking at this, but we want to make sure that we're considering the other sides of both 99 as well, as well as Walton Sherwood Road. Policy seven already talks about, you know, improving safety for all modes of transportation for people traveling to and within the town center. So, you're kind of already getting at that. And then you certainly could talk about strategies if you wanted to reflect that, but I don't know that you need to. On Mr. Stewart's comments, I just wanted to state that there is, I mean, there was quite a bit of traffic analysis that was done with this. It's just we're not adopting anything, so there's a lot of things that we don't have to do at this point in time. The economic development component, the idea is that you want to create a vibrant economically, you know, sound community by having a mixture of uses. And I believe in the staff report, we did address economic development. And then, as you know, one of his comments was, why aren't we looking at four to five-story buildings? You received resounding feedback that that was not supported.
Did he, oh, he left. Yeah, I did want to bring, I did want to bring that up to him too, was that we had mentioned that up here. The comments were very much against...
Right.
...multi-story buildings.
So, I guess that's, that's all I've got at this moment.
Julia, could I add that there was an economic study that was done as part of the appendix, as well as a public involvement plan, which is also, I believe, is Appendix B, maybe?
Maybe.
That was done specific for this project.
Well, there's Eugene right now.
There's Eugene. Did you hear that, Eugene? So, you had mentioned, you had brought up the point of five, four, four and five-story buildings. And through all the public comments that we've gotten, it's been very resounding no to multi-story buildings within the town center. So, just to let you know.
I might just reply that maybe I could even see a smaller building on a larger plot line, giving more green space around. So, I think there's more, if the land supports it physically.
That's your opinion?
Right on.
All right.
Thanks.
So, if you're done asking me questions...
Do we have any other questions for staff?
And then taking public testimony?
I just have, just have one. And just to clarify, I know there's no longer any action. Is that basically dissolving? I mean, are there, is that going to be used somewhat in the, are we going to kind of revisit those action plans?
Most likely, what we will do, what you're not, what you're doing is you're not adopting that. You're not saying with this adoption package, we think these might be good ideas, because I, from what we understand, you, you aren't sure whether or not those are good ideas. Certainly, when we move forward into the implementation phase and we start digging deeper into those issues, we will look at the consultant's recommendations, and we will maybe have that as a starting point or have that as part of the, you know, package of things that you consider, because we're not going to waste that work that was done. But it's not anything that you're buying off on at this point in time.
So, when do we usually address something like that? Would that be when an applicant comes up and says, hey, I want to develop? Or we're going to be spending some time to start looking at the details? Because it all comes down to land, land use terminology.
A combination of things. Most of it is going to be through more code cleanup stuff, more code...
Looking forward to that.
More code updates. And we, some of them are actually things that we had originally identified as part of our code cleanup, and we, we haven't been able to get to because we've got a lot of things going on as well, you know, including the town center, and that's the old town standards. And so, we're going to have to develop a work program that we can fit in with our current staffing levels and current budgets that will get us to this implementation. Some of them are going to be done. We're doing our transportation system plan update. We know we'll be able to get to that. Some of them may take longer, but it's a roadmap. It's a, it's a strategy. We're not necessarily going to do everything tomorrow. Certainly, if a developer comes in and wants to do something and wants to do a zone change or wants to do something, you know, they want to make a code amendment that they think is consistent, they can apply for that, and you can consider that. And you can consider that in, you know, in the, you know, in relation to the town center plan and the conference of plan policies. If you, I mean, that would be what you would do. That wouldn't mean that you'd have to make, you'd have to approve it if you didn't feel like it was consistent with the plan. And as Pat Allen, you know, said at the public work session, we all, you know, sort of a guiding principle is let's make the right thing the easy thing to do, but there's a lot of disagreement over what the right thing to do is. And so, even in these strategies, they're still vague. I mean, there's still a lot of, you know, public, you know, opinion on what that means, and that's why we have to go through a process, so.
Essentially, this is a bird's eye view of kind of what we think we want to do.
And we intentionally made them more vague, because we initially started this whole process, they were much more specific, and we all went, wait, that's too specific.
Right.
And so, we took away the action plans and just made them policies, right?
Right.
And strategies. And strategies, so that we could, in fact, look at them as an intention, not necessarily a specific.
And what you'd be, what this will allow you to do is really hone in on specific strategies, rather than having a year and a half to look at a lot of things and not necessarily get great feedback on any one thing. You're going to be able to spend a lot more time getting real in-depth feedback on specific issues and know, hopefully, that the decisions that you're recommending are based on, you know, very thorough-vetted community input.
So, what are the negatives to pulling the theater center, that whole shopping center, into the town center plan as far as part of the town center? I understand, I know through a lot of the community comments, people talked about wanting the Safeway and that on the other side of 99, and there's definitely a serious pedestrian issue with, with, with some of that. But what's the...
Really, the same as the, the cons of making it across the highway. We would have to, it wasn't analyzed. It wasn't evaluated from a traffic standpoint. You know, we'd have to make a lot of changes to a lot more of the document. Again, we can do it, but it will likely result in more delays. And I don't, I don't know. I think we would have to talk to the consultants and think about what, what in detail that would involve. But primarily, it was the, it's the traffic issues and the traffic analysis, the maps, the text throughout the document.
I think that a lot of that was already pretty, looked at pretty thoroughly with the TAC and the SAC, wasn't it?
That, yes.
Including them?
We believe it was, but ultimately, that they're making a recommendation to you and to the council. So, you certainly can make changes. Yeah, I guess my hope or my recommendation is that we can reflect those concerns and those needs through text without modifying the boundary itself. But ultimately, that's up to you and the council.
Is Mayor Middleton coming back, do we know? His glasses are here.
He looks as though he is still here.
Might ask him what the city council's feelings are on it before we spend a bunch more grief about it.
I know, I mean, I'll speak for him. I know he is eager to see it at the council level. That doesn't mean that you couldn't continue it to another meeting, but I don't know that they would want to see a long delay. Again, our grant funding is done, and so, we're, staff time was not really envisioned that we would be spending a lot more time on this. Again, we will do what we need to do, but I don't know that we have months left.
The grant was for the consultant, and that's part that's done.
Well, the grant was intended to get us through the end. And so, there was staff time and a match, and we, the city got reimbursed a small portion of that, of that staff time that was assumed as well. And at this point, there is no more consultant funds, and there's no, so basically, we're not, this isn't counting towards a match, and we're just doing it, which...
Which we need to do. You know, we got, I guess we got something for it.
We want to definitely make sure that we get, we want it to be done, we want it to be done right.
I think some of the challenges that we run into is we have a state highway running right through the middle of our town, where some, a lot of cities do not have one running right through there. I think that creates some, that creates a kind of a, the boundary issue, I think, that we're talking about.
Which creates the 99.
I don't know how to deal with that, but I think that, I think what Julia is proposing with the boundaries and then using like the Six Corners District as an overlay, I'm just going to call it an overlay to make everything kind of homogeneous, and it looks like it's kind of planned that way. I kind of like that idea as a solution without starting over.
Okay.
It was my opinion.
I agree. I don't think we should start over. I think that if you make minor modifications, like you suggested to the plan, so that it refers to adjacent to, traveling into, traveling out of, you know, and referencing adjacent properties and uses and whatnot, I think that's a great idea. I think it's a great idea to have a special area, Chapter Nine. I think it's a good idea, because we, we will have special areas that we want to look at individually. And I don't think the town center plan is a one-size-fits-all plan.
Right.
You know, and, and as much as I love going to the cinema, I don't, I honestly don't think that adding, going around your property line is going to help you in any way with the county. I think it's going to take individual voices, you know, when they come next week, coming to that meeting and saying, we don't like that plan, you know, maybe something like that. I just, I don't think, I don't think changing our boundaries is going to necessarily help in that particular situation.
No, I agree.
So, real quick, before we continue our discussion, is there any more public testimony?
Are we done with that? Thought we closed public testimony.
Again, for your record, Phil Grillo, the only thing I would add, just to kind of follow up on the discussion that was just occurring, is I would be, again, more than happy to work with, work with planning staff and wherever else may be appropriate with the city, if Planning Commission wants to, you know, continue in this for, you know, two weeks or whatever, to try and help with some of that language. I mean, essentially, what we're talking about is an area of influence, kind of a penumbra around the town center that seems to be where you're headed. And, and I think it's just really a matter of kind of trying to craft some language. I agree with Commissioner that, you know, sort of magically changing the boundary is not, is not really the issue. It's really about sending the right message, I think, that, that this is something that the city is concerned with. That's our concern as well, and that's why we'd like to be able to be sort of a partner with the city in helping with that language. And so, if that's something that you're willing to do, we're absolutely willing to add that we don't want to make it into a giant work program for the city or for Julia. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing, and there will be no further testimony received. And is there any more discussion between with the...
I think you still...
You mean, we're going to deliberate right now, is that it?
I think you just, does he need to close a public hearing with a gavel, and then we have a discussion, or is it still part of the same?
Don't we just close the public comment, part of the hearing?
Yes, I'm closing. So, the public hearing's closed, and we will accept no further testimony. Now, we can have our discussion. Now, we can have our discussion, and do we want to, you guys want to discuss with Mayor Middleton? Hey, Bill?
Yeah. So, what do you think?
What do you think about what?
What does the council think about the plan? What are your thoughts?
On the town center plan?
Town center plan, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we're pretty well supportive of, because there's been a lot of amendments made, and it looks pretty good. Some of the changes that Jean came up with are pretty good, too. I don't think you'll have a lot of problem, once you accept it coming through us, because like, like Julie was seven, was telling us, our big issue is the Tuolent Sherwood Road, and that's a whole different thing, so it's not involved in the town center, so that. And you look at the Southwest Corridor Plan, when it comes through, it does coordinate with this plan, and then with the new TSP. So, I think that it'll be accepted. Whatever you push forward to us, I don't think there'll be any changes, or very minor changes.
What, what's your guys' thoughts or feelings when, when looking at the surrounding properties, like the Safeway, the cinemas, and that are within, next to that boundary in Six Corners? Any preference thoughts on including, excluding, an overlay idea that we're talking about?
Much like the option two?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be supportive of that.
Within the town.
Within the town, well-
If that's just it, we're having this controversy.
We can't really slow the process down, unfortunately.
Well, that's kind of what we're talking about doing.
We're kind of at a dead end, but the plan can be, it can be amended correctly, or correct.
In the future.
In the future, because it is just a plan, and that's the way we're looking at it. We've had so many plans done here in the last 20 years that we couldn't even gauge the changes that would happen, but we had talked about having it a larger part, but I don't know, that would really, that would slow our process down tremendously.
But it sounds like the council is in agreement or supportive, but we're kind of thinking as well.
So, we're kind of split here. I think some of us are feeling okay with moving forward with the six, with the option two, and others are, personally, I'm feeling like, I'm not so sure, we shouldn't spend a little more time and, and try and expand the town center boundaries to include the Regal Land, to include across 99. I know that that's not necessarily supported by staff, and obviously, we ran out of money for that.
And we really are running out of time, too.
Why? Why are we running out of time?
So, what would, what would two weeks do to our timeframe?
Even beyond that, how are we running out of time?
Why do we need two more weeks?
Four weeks.
Why do we need four weeks? We can't make a decision tonight on this? Do you think we need more, more time?
What I think is, I don't think everybody's ready to make a decision on this. I think that's the issue.
I am.
She would know more of the impacts than I would.
You say we're running, but Mayor Middleton, you say we're running out of time. Is that because of why?
Well, we've had it so long, we really need to implement it. I mean, it falls in line with all our other plans, too. It's like a big picture coming in here.
Okay.
And the longer we delayed, it kind of slows our other plans down, too. And then also, we're trying to comply with Metro on this, which is a big push for it. But we've got so many other projects we're trying to work on, too, that will affect the city, that we really have to be careful how much staff time we're going to put more into this.
Okay.
And it may harm some of our other projects that we're moving forward on, too, because we do have a limited staff, limited time. What would your feeling be, Julia, on that?
She already shared that.
I can, I can respect that, I can, I mean, that's understandable. I also want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our businesses.
Oh, absolutely.
All right. So, what, what else do people want to know? What do we need to know from the, what does commissioners want to know that we don't have today, information?
I guess I did like the opportunity, perhaps, to let the Regal Cinema people look at the language a little bit, maybe they can give us some direction with, being more inclusive with that, if they're willing to do that. I think that, I haven't had a chance to really look at Jean's comments here. Let's talk about those for a second. We didn't really talk about those. She's asked, she's suggesting in her changes here, that there's a Scrivener error, and she's just talking about changing the picture, the image, on figure three. Okay. And be more clear, be more clear that, that everything will include more public involvement and public hearing. I know we've said that, and I think, I think that's listed some places, which it looks like you've addressed here.
Yeah, and if you notice on that comment log, I included a staff recommendation, if I had one, and so, I said that we could add the following text, and, you know, if you think that gets to what the comment was, we could certainly do that.
And I think Commissioner Simpson would have really liked to have been here tonight. My convers, I had a conversation with her indicating that if we weren't really great with this, that she wouldn't mind if it got held over, so that she'd have a little chance to. She did her best to put her thoughts down, but she's out of town this week, so I don't know that she's had a tremendous amount of time to look at that, and she's probably the most detail-oriented of us all. So, that leads me to feel like maybe if, if that plus the Regal Cinemas-
I personally feel, I personally feel that Regal Cinemas and the tech fall properties have a huge stake in this, and, you know, they've asked for a couple of weeks. I'm inclined to let them have a couple of weeks to give some input into some of the language.
Can we take their input if public testimony has been closed?
Can we vote on this before we, maybe there are other commissioners? I don't think we have a problem. I think that, I mean, I, I mean, if we, if we start including the cinema property, then we have to include Les Schwab, and we have to include the Langer Farms property, and we have to get Safeway, and then suddenly, we have the whole, we have the whole map again. And that's why this brilliant plan of having Six Corners Commercial District Option Two sort of encompasses all of those entities, and allows us at a later date to focus on that area. The whole Chapter 9 thing, special areas, I think that's a great idea, a great way to approach it, but I don't think, our plan is so plan-ish, it's less action-ish than it used to be. It's so much of a guideline, like Julia said, that even if we implement it tonight, there's no reason why we can't, you know, make changes later, and I don't, I don't know, and I just don't think that-
That doesn't happen very easy.
No, it doesn't.
What was that?
Well, as, as, as time progresses and things, and circumstances change, think of Southeast Sherwood Master Plan.
And I, I mean, I can't agree that we're asking to start all over. I think we're just asking to make sure, to, to, to allow, you know, some time, so that the other commissioner can be here, and so that we can make sure that, that the strategies within the policies are in line with what's best for, you know, one of the major businesses of Sherwood.
But wouldn't that require more public-
This is going to have a very, very big impact on them.
Would it require more public notice and more public speaking?
I don't think that's what we're talking about.
No, if you were to continue this meeting to a date certain, we would not have to re-notice if you, and we did notice the entire study area, just on the chance. We didn't want to cut that off if that was the reason. So, I think notice is fine, as long as you were to continue to a date certain. If you were to continue, my request would be that you continue for two weeks. We're really hoping to have this at the council on September 17th, and I think they're kind of planning that into their schedule, so we certainly can do a two-week continuance if necessary. But I would also request that you target it very specifically, and that if you can go through all the issues that you are in agreement in, and maybe, you know, like, if you were to continue it, like, have everything resolved, except for the things that you need to talk about more. That would be my request to you.
Okay. Well-
Commissioner, Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. The only thing I would add to that is that I would recommend that you actually reopen the hearing and continue the hearing while you're here today. Since you've officially closed the hearing, I would recommend that you actually reopen it tonight, and then continue it to that date in two weeks.
Okay.
If we're going to do that, okay.
If you're going to do that.
So, any further information is not coming from the city. You won't be presenting us with anything new, other than the, the changes that we've talked about now, but it's up to us as the Planning Commission, as well as the cinema, to provide any information for us to review?
Generally, when you guys continue, you continue with a specific direction to staff. Find out this, make this change, and we want to see what it looks like. So, that's what I would envision, is that you would give us a direction, so that we can come back with a change, or if you just needed to think about it, I mean, that's, you've continued before, just kind of like, I think I've got all the information I need, but I need to ponder it more, then you wouldn't be providing specific direction to staff. But I think that-
I guess that's what I'm looking for, is, is more specific information from the stakeholder, as far as tech fall properties, as to what they may want to see verbiage-wise in, in the policy stuff. I mean, I, I know that they've discussed, that they've talked a little bit about it, and, you know, asked for a couple of weeks to do that. I'm inclined to let them have a couple of weeks to do that.
For that reason, I can agree, but I, I still think the biggest issue with that property is the Washington County's access, in and out. And it's our town, I don't think the plan, I don't think the planning, the town center plan really has any impact on it. I think it's more of a design issue.
Yeah, I don't either, and I think that the, that the attorney and also agreed that that was, you know, on the county, but-
So, I agree with Commissioner Carey. So, why are we going to extend for two weeks if it really has no impact? You just, Mike, you just said that.
Can I request, I'm sorry, I just, I don't know that we're that far off, and if maybe you took a five-minute recess, and I could talk with them, and then I could advise on whether or not it would be appropriate to reopen the hearing, to consider some revised texts, rather than waiting when it doesn't sound like there's a lot of people, we might spend an hour debating on whether or not we, we wait and not get to the meat of-
That's reasonable.
That's fine. Let's take, let's take, let's take a five-minute break and come back.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
In order to take it, yeah, I want to go.
All right. We are going to return to our discussion, but first, as a matter of, here we are, a process, I am going to, I'm going to reopen the hearing in order to continue discussion with the staff. So, the hearing for, what is this called?
PA 1301.
PA 13-01, Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan Amendments is reopened.
So, we do not have any proposed language to share with you, but there are several options. It was just, discussion was that we just needed to think about it a little bit more. I think there's certainly common agreement as to what the, the intent would be, but not wanting to do it on the fly. So, if you did not want to make a decision as is, or with the changes that I said, the, you know, mobility within N2, you can, and Chad, maybe you can chime in here, but there, I think there's several options. You can just flat-out continue it, you can direct staff to come up with some specific changes, but not necessarily reopen the hearing for additional public testimony, and then that would give me time to work with them, and I could present sort of what I think is, is the recommended changes. Or, and/or, you could essentially approve components, and this would be actually sort of my recommendation, so that we have some clear direction on what it is that you want changes on, is at least providing very clear direction on the elements that you approve, or that you want changes to, and then come back with, just to discuss specific things, or to review the changes that were made. Chad, did I miss anything?
No, so, the last option is really a process where you would approve as much of the plan tonight as you're willing to approve, and then, when you come back in two weeks, the only issues you would be discussing are those issues you left open. And that would therefore allow the process to move forward a little more quickly, and that's, as a legislative process, you could certainly do that as part of this hearing, if you wanted to.
Can you identify for us, Julie, what parts you would be, it seems like it'd be easier to say, "We're okay with everything but these things," as opposed to saying, "We're okay with these 20 things and not these five?"
Yeah. The specific things that I want direction on, I mentioned actually at the beginning of my presentation.
Yes.
One is the Six Corners Option 1 or Option 2. Whether or not you have any other issues with the policies and strategies that you want to discuss. The HCT map, providing direction on whether or not to, as we discussed earlier, provide that local street, or the local connection map, whether or not to remove the reference to HCT, or leave it alone, with the understanding that it says it could be an HCT alignment. Yeah, and just-
Can we take them individually and just vote?
That would be great.
I would think that out of simplicity, okay.
You okay with that, Brad?
I guess I'm, so, no, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out which, which of the, which of the policies and strategies are going to directly relate to what the input is going to be?
And I guess I wouldn't say vote on a specific policy and strategy, but are there any changes to the policies or strategies that you had identified after the, the work session and the public hearing, that you wanted to make changes to? And I've put back up that slide of possible changes that you might want to consider.
Gotcha.
And then also, so, we could just go through, also, the comment log changes as well.
Okay. So, if you, okay.
Julia?
Mm-hmm.
Additional changes to consider, bullet number two, modify policy three strategies. Further to reflect, you see that, that second bullet right there?
Yeah, to reflect that there would might, there would be a transition of auto-oriented uses, that this was, came up in, in my small group, that, that rather than just saying yes or no to a prohibition on auto-oriented uses or drive-throughs-
Right.
There's a realization that Six Corners, or the Langer Commercial District, you might have more, and that's okay, but that as you transition into Old Town-
Okay, I, I do remember that from the work session.
And so, it's, so, it's more of an acknowledgement. Again, I don't know that you have to modify the policy, but you're stating, this is our expectation, that when we move into the implementation stage, we recognize that they're not all one-size-fits-all.
And that's written into the policies.
It could be, but it doesn't have to be. It's up to you and the council and their comfort level.
I would suggest that we do for future reference.
Okay, so, can we just take these one by one? That's about the best thing?
Sure.
So, each policy? Is that what the, what you were recommending?
If that's what you'd like.
Page of the on.
And if it's helpful, I don't know that you have to not approve policies that you think might be affected by the Six Corners plan, that you can approve them as drafted, with the idea that staff will come back with language, amending some of the policies.
Sure.
So, you don't have to try to pick and choose.
Policy one is a no-go.
Well, let's just go through.
Okay, let's start with policy one.
Okay.
Well, actually, so, do we want to, so, are we still in discussion with staff on this? Is that what, what we're doing here? Before we start making a decision?
Do we have to-
Because we've got, you know, we-
Make a motion on each of these policies?
No.
No? Okay. So, we can just discuss and say, "We're good," or "We're not good," and then we can come back and say, "We're good on all except for this policy."
Yeah, essentially, what you have in front of you is a plan, policies, and conference of plan language. That's what's proposed, and so, you could say, "This is perfect as it is," or you can say, "We want these changes in these areas," and that's the direction you're providing to us.
Okay. So, let's start with policy number one. And this is the, "City will support programs and improvements that facilitate a greater awareness of the unique characteristics of the town center, and that help inform visitors of the attractions in the area." So, this is basically talking about the signage and gateway features that we discussed in the-
And there hasn't been any conversation about that, anything other than good for me?
You know, yeah, a lot of good things came out of our work session, that, on what people wanted to see. I don't think, see us with anything that we want to change in that.
And just for your reference, those additional changes to consider were specifically comments that were identified in my group as potential changes to policies or strategies, so I tried to pull those out. And again, on page 21 of your Planning Commission packet is the summary from those meetings, so you can kind of see what came out of each group's discussion on those policies.
I just, I was thinking maybe just another, on the goal, or excuse me, the policy one, could we add-
I just, I was thinking maybe just another, on the goal, or excuse me, the policy one, could we add inform visitors of the attractions and services?
Is that a new, oh, the attractions and services?
And services.
That's good.
Yeah. It's a little more specific. I like that.
Good for me now.
Let's see.
Anybody else?
Use gateway features to highlight entry points, gateways, wayfind signage, unified theme.
Anybody else have any other additions to policy one?
So I have a question for Julia on policy one.
Yes.
So we had discussed, we had discussed, in a couple of the groups, we had discussed like districts within the Town Center that would kind of transition in signage to, to, is that part of this? I mean.
Yeah, I'm looking at the notes and it says, consider adding a strategy that considers each unique, just each district for its own uniqueness. And you could certainly do that under each policy, or I'm wondering if you couldn't create a new policy that just almost stands alone that's.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to reinvent this or, you know, but, I mean, do we have to, is that, is that more of an implementation piece when we go to implement than it is the actual idea of plan? I mean, we've talked about the, you know, the signage within the strategies. It seems like it may be more of a, when we go to implement, this is how we want to see it implemented with that.
Yeah, I, I agree. On this one, you could actually add the unique characteristics of the Town Center and its sub-districts.
Okay.
And that help inform visitors.
Let's, okay, let's do that. That would be fine.
But I think an overarching thing that I'm hearing is that
Yeah.
that there is uniqueness among the sub-districts and that should be respected.
Well, yeah, because people thought that, you know, the Old Town signage would have more of an old historic look to it. And as you moved into the more, you know, the closer to Six Corners, that, that, you know, the signage, where it would still all blend together, it would, it would somehow signify you were in a different area of, than Old Town. So. So with that, anything else on strategy or policy one for anybody? So we're good with policy one? All? So, anybody opposed to policy one? All right, that's great. Policy two, the city will encourage future development of appropriately scaled multifamily and single-family attached housing in targeted areas within the Town Center. Okay. Consider more opportunities for town home development in the Old Town overlay district that is consistent with the architecture.
Accessory dwelling units was the only part that really came up too much in conversation, wasn't it?
Evaluate accessory dwelling units?
Certainly accessory dwelling units was an issue. And I'll just highlight that on this one, it already talks about that are complementary and compatible with each distinct district within the Town Center.
Okay. Yes, okay. Okay. Does anybody have anything in strategy, in policy two that, that they want to see added, changed, or are we good with policy two? Anybody opposed to policy two? Okay. Policy two is good. Policy three, the city will ensure that development regulations encourage an appropriate mix of activities and uses within the Town Center that support the vision.
That's one of the ones that Julia mentioned.
Yep. Yes.
You have some different language you would suggest for two.
For policy three.
For policy three.
Almost in 3.1.
Encourage a transition away.
Julia, I think you were thinking about changing the actual policy number three, right, to encourage an appropriate mix of activities and uses within and around the Town Center that supports the vision? Or you could say within the Town Center and surrounding Six Corners area.
No, and that was policy four that I think I was proposing the around.
However, however, I do like that for policy three as well, though. I mean, as far as including the within and.
And around.
And around.
Adjacent or living.
Or, yeah, however you want to word it. But I, I think that that's a good thing to add.
Yeah, it's, it's really.
3.1?
It's.
With recognition that there'll be a transition of auto-oriented uses between sub-districts, just as adding that to the end of 3.1? More supportive of the pedestrian environment.
It's real, because it's a transition. And I think actually Commissioner Carey sort of caught that at the, when we were having that work session.
Right.
It's the word transition means a transition among the sub-districts. So.
Yes. Yes, because we talked about the fact that as you get further out from Old Town, it becomes less conducive to pedestrian and more to auto.
So maybe actually just changing the word in to from. So it would say, encourage a transition away from auto-oriented uses and low-density commercial uses from the Langer Drive Commercial District to, of the Town Center, to the Old Town.
That uses more supportive.
Yeah.
To the Old Town District, to uses that are more supportive of a pedestrian environment.
And what did, what did you change, what did you change on the, on the actual policy?
Just strategy 3.1, right?
Just on the policy part? Did you, did you do within and around?
Within and adjacent to, or within and around, whichever.
That's, that's fine. Either one is fine.
Even 3.1 is the one you're talking about right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have anything else for policy three? So I, would.
The 3.3, were we going to just have a, are we going to apply for all the sub-districts and also just work the neighborhood district in Old Town?
It's saying the whole Town Center.
Sorry, Commissioner Carey, could you speak into your microphone?
Oh.
It's really hard to hear you over here.
So 3.3, were we going to restrict that to the entire Town Center or just the residential and the Old Town Center? I know we want to discourage it, but we're going to outright restrict it, drive-through usage in the Langer portion, sub-district.
I'm sorry, you spoke into your microphone, but I wasn't listening to you.
Yeah.
Getting me to repeat something's hard enough. Say it three times. All right, I'll try it again. 3.3 for the third time.
3.3, version three.
Yeah, version three.
Yes.
Take three. Okay, so were we considering restricting outright drive-through in the entire Town Center or just the neighborhood sub-district and the Old Town sub-district?
I think that initially it was everywhere, but as we got talking, my understanding, it was more.
Lenient in the Langer.
Yeah. And so maybe it's, maybe rather than restrict, say, consider restricting or consider limiting.
I think, I think when we were looking, I mean, at least in some of, a couple of the groups, I was part of two groups. We were talking about restricting it within the Town Center if, but like, but not like the new Langer development with where the Walmart is.
Well, that's not part of the Town Center.
But that's, right, but that's not part of the Town Center. So allowing, being a little more lenient in the adjacent twos and less lenient in the actual Town Center portion.
Is that reflective in there?
This just says within the Town Center.
And so.
So restricting doesn't mean prohibit. So it doesn't mean.
It just means restricting.
So changing, so Julia said, consider restricting
Yeah.
within the Town Center so that that allows us to have some different thoughts in the Langer part of the.
And I'm, I'm literally thinking as I'm writing, so sorry. If you were to say, consider restricting new drive-through commercial uses within the Town Center based on the needs of each sub-district in order to enhance the pedestrian environment and promote pedestrian safety.
That sounds good to me.
That summarizes it very well.
You should do this.
That sounds good to me. Yeah, I mean, the comments I think.
This should be my job, huh?
No kidding.
Can you finish the rest of the policies?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
She thinks she did. She thought she did.
So policy four talks about encouraging new development and redevelopment within the Town Center that contributes to a pedestrian, so.
Isn't that one that Jean had an issue with with regard to the, I don't know, I guess not, bringing the building entrances close to the sidewalk?
The wording in policy four is missing a word anyways, but.
Policy one's true.
Well, the city will ensure that new development and redevelopment within the Town Center contribute. So it should be contributes or will contribute.
Will contribute.
Yes. To a pedestrian-friendly environment with humans, with human-scale buildings? As opposed to dog-scale buildings or?
As opposed to skyscrapers that are not human-scale.
Murray Vance, encourage development, entries close to the sidewalk. Wasn't that strategy one, wasn't that something that there was some consideration about not having?
Curb tight.
Curb tight development?
Yeah, there was certainly a lot of discussion about what that meant. And so.
Yeah, this was a tough one because we really talked a lot about that curb tight, where it's appropriate, that it may be appropriate in some places but not others. So that's kind of.
And one thing I heard a lot was, you know, that green and, you know, you might have a, like even a pedestrian plaza that, you know, so you don't necessarily have to have the building at the street, but you might have other things at the street.
It was more of a reduced setback, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, that actually sounds familiar.
Yeah, I remember something we talked about, not a zero setback, but a reduced setback or something.
Policy five.
Does that strike a bell to you, Julia?
Yeah, yes.
And the word is encourage, so it's more.
Well, I'm just thinking, in this one, what you're getting at is the pedestrian feel, you know, the, the way as you're walking down the sidewalk, you feel. And so if you said something like encourage development that brings buildings and entries close to the sidewalk or otherwise increases the pedestrian experience or something like that. And that leaves it open when you get to the implementation to consider the green, the plazas, that kind of.
Okay, I'm good with that. Sound okay?
That sounds good to me. I just have a really quick question that's not related to the policy.
What are you doing?
Well, no, it, it, really, two seconds. Does, does he have, does he have a copy of this back there? The, the. Sorry, I.
It's not him. He's got that.
He's got that, I mean.
It's the same.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. So, so, so anybody, anybody opposed to policy four?
Other than that?
Other than the changes that we discussed? I'm going to take that as a no. Policy five, the city will encourage property owners to invest in development that supports the Town Center vision and recommendations. So 5.1 ensured that.
That's pretty reasonable.
That the approval process and regulatory provisions develop.
Does it ask if anybody has a problem with that?
Does anybody have any problems with five?
It's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
Just to make private investment enhancement. So I don't think five, I don't think five is going to come into anything that, that, I mean, it talks about, it talks about property owner development and redevelopment, but I don't think that this is going to encompass anything that has to do with the theater.
Nope.
Potentially, do you, I mean.
Well, and remember, you're not, you, you're right now, you're not focusing on that. You're focusing on everything except for that.
Well, I know, but that's my thing is trying to figure out which of the policies that's going to.
Impact.
Going to impact is what I'm trying to figure out. So I'm just going to say that that's a possible. Does anybody have any specific issues with policy five? Policy six, city supports transit services that serve the needs of residents' businesses in the Town Center, including maintaining a robust, a robust local transit service network and planning for future high-capacity service to neighboring cities that, well, get.
So that was one we do want to make some slight changes to, I think, based on what we had a conversation about? Did we already do that in our?
You didn't specifically, and I guess I would say you don't have to, because what I, I think this means is that we're this is planning for future HCT to neighboring cities, not to Sherwood. But if you don't feel like that's what it says, then we can.
Well, it kind of addresses the letter from Twalton.
Yeah, I mean.
6.2 already.
Yeah.
Well, future high-capacity transit service and because we weren't just talking about high-capacity to Twalton, we were talking about just a local, local service to Twalton. Maybe you add local high-capacity transit and local service to neighboring cities. That would take care of that Twalton letter and still keep it potential on the high-capacity transit, because potential is okay. It happens, it happens. It's not, no one thinks it's going to, but.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing missing is the planning for future local transit service. And we're talking about maintaining what's there, but not about what we may add going forward. Anything else in six? Sorry, I should try to move us through a little quicker. Okay, so policy seven, this talks about the, the transportation system improvements. I think this is where we're getting more into changes to the roads, possibly. Because we're talking about changes to Sherwood Boulevard, Langer Drive.
So would we want to add in here the Six Corners Commercial District option two in that description to the Town Center boundary?
The Six Corners Commercial District wouldn't be adopted into the Town Center boundary, but.
So you don't want to mention it in the policy at all?
You could mention it. I guess I don't know what it means to reference something.
At those other special plan areas?
So I have a suggestion.
And other special plan areas?
Do we want, okay, we can do that.
Instead of being specific about Six Corners.
Table policy seven.
Well, I don't think we have a problem with it so much as just mentioning if we just enhance it to include in other special policy areas.
Yeah, we can do that.
So where, what would you specifically change? I'm sorry, I missed.
For people traveling to and within the Town Center and other special.
And other, other nearby special plan areas.
Special plan areas, yeah.
Two and within.
Adjacent plan areas. Adjacent special plan areas.
So the recommendation from our city attorney. No, the blue light is on. There you go.
It's, I think it's hazing for the new guy. I got this last time I was here, too.
That's okay, we do that to Chris.
Pam got it, too.
We treat it off because we didn't want to leave it to Chris.
What I was saying is, you should just be consistent throughout. And in previous sections, you used the language adjacent and areas adjacent to.
Right.
And I would recommend that you just continue to use that language instead of bringing in the other special plan areas.
So by saying adjacent to and not using special plan areas, we're covering the special plan area in case of Six Corners.
Right.
All right.
And so in, okay.
We talked about 7.1, the double S is there?
Jean already did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Jean was all over that.
She is a hawk.
So, okay, never mind. For all directions, nine, nine, okay. Anything else on seven? Eight, city will balance the need for vehicular mobility within the Town Center and with the other transportation and land use goals and priorities identified in the Town Center Plan. So again, probably with Town Center and adjacent blah, blah. So, again, probably with town center and adjacent, blah, blah, blah. Sorry, technical term.
So within and adjacent to the town center.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to keep with the consistency in.
That way we don't have to change.
We can, yeah, just go ahead and keep that. So, what was 8.3, establish transportation mobility targets for new developments within the town center. And adjacent that are appropriate for a town center context capture. Okay. Got that part?
Well, those would all be future actions that would be through the TSP update, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm actually wondering if we shouldn't say through the TSP update as part of 8.3
Okay.
as well. And then that will, you'll already be doing adjacent to because you'll be doing more.
Sure, okay. Any other changes? Policy nine, the city will support actions that provide sufficient parking for businesses and residents while maximizing the efficiency of parking areas.
Was, is any part of this where we were talking about the town home parking and using their garages?
I don't.
Was that too specific?
I believe, so I think that was actually earlier on.
What was finally decided on that? That was another point of contention at one point. Seems like it would be here, since we're talking about parking for residents.
Well, it was under 2.1, that's where we talked about the town homes. Oh, 9.2, evaluate the required number and potential locations of automobile parking spaces for town homes within each sub-district of the town center to ensure that this type of residential development is feasible and can be developed in a way consistent with the vision for each sub-district in the town center.
So no decision, just an evaluate?
Right.
Awesome.
On 9.4, accommodate car sharing programs within the town center, is that like zip car parking only parking stall or something?
Yeah.
Like that, okay. And then have we talked, I'm, sorry, have we talked at all about accommodating plug-in electrics for people within the town center? Somebody asked me about that, and I, I don't remember having any discussions about that at all, it didn't ever even cross my mind earlier on.
Yeah, there are, I mean, I, I know that there's some up in the.
Albertson's has them.
Like the Albertsons, there's some over in, in Canary, so I think that's kind of just happening, I'm not sure.
Also, the Safari Sam's has a few slots.
Do they have them now? Okay. They seem, they seem to be popping up more and more, so.
So car sharing and other. They're on a grant?
I have no idea what it costs to put those in.
That would make sense.
Okay.
Granted, okay, great. We have any, we don't have any in Old Town, do we?
We do.
Oh, no, we do, actually, the new, that's right, forgot about that.
Yeah, we're by the square.
We're rocking that.
Awesome, okay.
Okay, anything else in nine? Moving on to, hey, wow, that was the last one.
It was. Well, Jean hadn't had something for implementation, right?
Yeah, basically what she recommend, or her comment, and this is again on the comment log, is just add more discussion under the implementation section on page 25.
Which is one sentence.
And so I proposed adding the language, specific steps necessary for full implementation of the plan include updates of, to the transportation system plan, evaluation and amendments to the development code, and consideration of changes to the zoning and uses permitted within the town center. Any actions taken to implement will involve additional public involvement. The town center is the community of Sherwood's plan, and as such, the community will be requested to provide input and direction throughout the implementation process.
Great, that brings up the TSP part, which is something I was concerned, concerned about having that happen right after we do this, so to me that, that addresses it well.
No fear, we've got another TGM grant that we're going to have to have a time crunch on, so we'll address it. And then, yeah, her other comment was, so I guess, can I get your feedback on that? So her first comment was cropping the building so that, that the figure three, which is on page. Thank you, page 11, it's the Sherwood Boulevard thing, she, what her comment was is that the, the, the street amenities looked nice, it's a good sort of aspiration, but was concerned that the building just looked.
Out of scale?
Looked out of scale.
We're talking on the, on the second picture?
The plan, right.
Well, that's where we talked about, you know, doing appropriate setbacks.
Right.
Right, so I'm okay with changing that picture.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it, I think it's, I mean, the building obviously could be okay, but obviously the setbacks make it look really terrible.
Right. And then the other comment from her and then my suggested language, are you comfortable with that on, so that would go on page 25, basically the very end of the document under the implementation section?
I actually like that a lot.
Others?
I like your language a lot.
See, I really want to see that area look like this, I really do. It looks really cool.
Don't digress.
Which one?
Oh, no, just up, up by the bus stops in the nail place. Good graphics, whoever did it.
So I like what you've done on page 25 for that amendment, does anybody else have a problem with that?
No, I think it's great.
I think we're good.
And then direction on which map to insert in the comprehensive plan.
I'd go option two.
Show me where option one is again.
Option one is actually in the text, but I can, if you want to see.
Page is on?
It is. Page 56 of your packet.
Uh, page 56 of my packets. Oh, he's got a blow-up of it, so that's fine.
Awesome.
Move. He doesn't want anybody else to have them.
Apparently, here. I never did get one, after all that, I have option two, okay. Oh, my God. So these are the two options for the six corners.
Oh, no, this is option one instead of option two. It's a blow-up of option one, where's option three?
So option two basically.
Expands it.
Includes the adjacent properties.
On the north side, yes.
North side. And the west.
So this is just the commercial district?
Right.
This is the, this is what we're going to add.
This is the six, basically, this is what you would identify as the six corners commercial district, so that when you were doing implementation for the Langer Drive Commercial District, you could keep that area in mind, and if you were to go forward and do planning for this area, you've kind of already identified what, what you mean by that.
So includes Home Depot area?
No.
No, Home Depot's down at the other end of the farm.
Far north is Regal Cinemas.
Definitely option two.
East is left one.
Definitely option two. Yeah, definitely option two, otherwise you're excluding the theater and this developable property.
What do you guys think, option one or two?
Option two.
Option two?
Option two.
All in favor of two?
Two.
Great. Anybody not for option two? That probably would have been easier, no, okay, option two it is.
And then I just want to reiterate that I, I think that I got direction from you guys that on the future HCT map to show the local street or the local.
Bus.
Bus to Twalton as well as.
So the arrow will just have two heads on it.
Okay.
Two-headed arrow, feels like this project.
What additional areas we're needing amendment based on your conversation with the Regal Cinemas people, was it?
Well, I don't know, my guess is it would be to the policies, but I, I don't know exactly, it might be to the comprehensive plan and changes.
So my, my question was going to be, when we, when we do a motion, are we going to motion to approve what we've discussed and leave this open for additional?
Staff input.
To additions or revisions based on staff input, based on property owner input, based on, I mean, I'm not sure how we want to word that, word a, a motion based on that. I want to make sure we leave it open for two weeks to allow them to have discussions with staff in case we need to add or change something, but I also want to make sure that we, what we've said is good moves forward as what we've said is good, so.
So I would recommend that you have a motion to continue the hearing to the date certain in, in two weeks for the purpose of adopting additional amendments related to the adjacent areas to the town center that you want to include within the, either the amendments to the comprehensive plan or the policies, wherever they may be. And, and then as, as part of that motion, what I would suggest is that you say that everything else that you have approved, that you will approve everything else as discussed tonight, leaving the hearing open for the express purpose of only addressing these additional topics related to the adjacent areas.
Okay, and can, can we close the public testimony, or do we have to leave that open for them to give the input?
Well, you'll want to, you'll want to leave the public hearing open for the next time, but continuing to the date certain, but only for that limited purpose.
Right. But, so, but will we accept further testimony as well?
You'll accept further public testimony, input from the staff, but just on that specific topic.
Perfect.
Okay, let me get it a shot.
All right.
I would like to make a motion to continue the hearing for the public hearing 13-01, Sherwood Town Center Comprehensive Plan Amendments, with the understanding that we have approved all portions of the comprehensive plan other than the further discussion of the adjacent property situation. And in the next two weeks, we'll continue the hearing until. August 27th, and at that time, we will consider the testimony or, and additional language from the staff on that item only. All right?
There's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Outstanding, the motion's been made and seconded, and do I need to repeat that motion?
I think you do.
Outstanding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and we will continue this to August 27th. If, nobody has anything else? No? Meeting adjourned.